Hi, are we ready, David? Welcome to the July eighth, two thousand thirteen work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight, we have three items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. We'll ask, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, sir.
For any of our items?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Then if Sue, you wouldn't mind calling first item.
First item is discussion of city board commission committee selection process. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
There. Well, no, I'm actually gonna need it if you want to do the presentation. Yeah, it's just a quick one. It will hopefully start our discussion. Mayor, council.
I'll just hang over here so I can say yes.
This is the first discussion, probably of a couple we'll have, if you all want to, that talks about the way that we select board committee and commission members. I've had some interest by some members of the council to look at this and to maybe look at what best practices are. I want to preface the discussion tonight by saying, though, that we're not gonna, I'm gonna ask that you not provide me any direction tonight, and that would be because if you provide me direction other than the way that we are currently doing it, it would actually violate our city's charter. The charter is very specific at this point as to how we appoint board and committee members. But as you all know, you will be addressing probably, and I believe this will be one of them, charter changes that we're allowed to make under the home rule provision that we have in Georgia law, and those will be tracking in August. It'll be a work session in August, and then there's a very specific set of advertising criteria that we have to go through over a period of sixty days to be able to make the public hearings and the process of the charter changes work. My belief is that one of the charter changes that you will approve, I hope, is that the charter not specify how boards and committees are appointed. The charter, there is nothing that is required in the charter document to do that. There's nothing that says that you have to have one member from each district and the mayor get one at large. That's all great things to have in your code of ordinances, but in the forming document to your city, that's a bit restrictive to have your charter go so far as to prescribe that. So I'm not saying that we won't have a method. We just will ask the charter not speak to it. Having said that, the discussion tonight is really around some of the reasons why people serve, some of the things that do a little bit of the academic part of a presentation and what we found out why people want to serve and all that good stuff, which you all know, but we'll touch on it as a refresher, what makes a good committee member, at least some of the bullet points I think you all agree with. And then we've done a little bit of looking locally at how other people do it. We did some more of a national look as well. I have taken those slides out for tonight, will likely bring them back next month if we have this conversation, with some criteria as to how we've selected the cities that we selected, and then maybe some discussion points. And if they're not discussion points, I'm gonna try to lead you someplace. I'm just gonna ask some questions and see what discussion happens, and then I'll try to take away some direction so that when this comes forward next time, I'm more honed in on what you all think is appropriate. Having said that, I'm not a big believer in reading to you the slides. I figure y'all could do that yourself, but, you know, there is a bit of academic research out there, believe it or not, on local governments that appoint board members. I didn't think there would be. I thought that this was just gonna be one of those process things we found and went to look for well-performing cities and how they did it, and then also just maybe would intuitively believe that, you know, we kind of have what's best for Milton in mind. But there is a bit of academic research out there that identifies why you use these boards, what they are intended to do, and then what makes a successful board or committee member. And there's some bullets for you to look at. Leadership qualities, obviously, the last one. At any given time, any member of the board could be tapped to sit as the chair, and when we look for leadership qualities, we want to make sure that we're looking for those qualities amongst the entire board and not just individual members, I believe. And then it's always helpful to have, jumping up in the list a little bit, it's always helpful to have some education background or skill that is part of the boards you're serving on, to have a little bit of that background. A design review board member that knows a little bit about architecture is a great thing. A planning commissioner who knows a little bit about land use is a good thing. A board of zoning appeals member who would know something about the judicial process is a good thing. You know, those are all qualities to look for as these members are selected. Typically, why citizens volunteers, they want to be involved, and that's one of the things that these board and committee appointees do, is it allows people who otherwise wouldn't be involved in their local government an opportunity to be involved and make a difference. These are, the boards that we have are more advisory in nature. They're not necessarily decision-making except for the board of zoning appeals and I guess the historic preservation commission to some degree, and the other quasi-judicial ones that we have. But this helps them fulfill their desire to be involved. People like to be involved in local government, and this is an opportunity for them to give back into their community. So what did we find when we looked here locally as to how other folks did it? We asked some simple questions, and we said, how do you put out a call for volunteers? Do you put out a call for volunteers? Does the city, to some degree, advertise an opening? Or is it driven by the council members specifically to go out and canvass their district or their area of town or at-large, if it were to be at-large? Is it the council members' responsibility to go do it themselves and generate their own candidate to then bring forward to the rest of the council? There's a couple of cities that you'll even see here. I'll go to, and this gets a little bit tinier. But of our local cities here, there's an assortment that advertised vacancies. Some do, some don't. You know, our city to the south approaches citizens, some like we do, and then brings them back to the council for approval. The thing about Alpharetta is the council members are able to seek candidates at-large, meaning that they can go to anywhere in the city, and they have both paid and unpaid boards. I put that in there because I knew there was some question in a prior discussion as to whether or not these board members should be paid, so I tried to just get answers to that question as well. Duluth advertises vacancies on the website. Their mayor and council appointed, very similar to the way you all do it, and there is a twenty-five dollar per meeting paid out to them for certain boards and committees. Johns Creek is a little bit different than, we are actually quite different. They do advertise, they do a call for candidates, meaning that when they have a vacancy, they do something public and say, we have an opening in this particular position. The council forwards up to three names per board to the mayor, and the mayor makes the nomination, and the council approves or does not the mayoral nominations. I don't know what the track record is over there as to success at this point of getting somebody appointed to a board or commission, but that's the process that they use.
Depends on the day.
Depends on the day. Can highlight here, you know, Marietta, very similar, advertises. They select based on qualifications, council approves. Norcross advertises, they're at-large, council approves. Roswell doesn't. The mayor interviews and the council approves. And Sandy Springs doesn't, but they're selected at-large, the mayor nominates, the council approves. What you can see is that there is, for every different way to do it, there's somebody that's gonna do it that way. You know, and if you look at some of the way that boards and committees are established across the nation, there's no one way that is the best way. You know, there's no one-size-fits-all. I was telling the mayor earlier today, in some of this academic research, I saw a board at one place where they had created the criteria to have two dentists on it, one medical doctor, one farmer, you know, you could create, it was communities creating boards of all sorts of different varieties that met whatever their need was for that particular, whatever particular cause they were trying to move forward. So, as you can see, even if we touch, reach out to those that are close to us and that touch us, there's an assortment of different ways, and there's not one way that seems to be the predominant way. There's just, and every community does it the way that they think is best. And then this is the discussion starter, and this is where we can have our discussion tonight, is we've come up with different ways, at least to say, to throw the question out there, how do we want to encourage citizen involvement? And then if you were to pick that way, what would be the advantage to you as council members to do it in that way? One differing way that we do it today is we could involve the city. We could involve the city staff in posting vacancies, announcing vacancies. If, you know, Matt, for example, needed a planning commissioner, he could say, Chris, I'd need a planning commissioner, and I don't really have a good candidate. I've got some people I want to talk to, but would you be willing to do a call for volunteers for me so that I could see what came in and make a selection, maybe of people that I don't know want to be involved, and maybe I can find somebody that I can involve? You know, the risk to that is that you have two hundred people involved, or two hundred people respond, and you're gonna make one hundred ninety-nine of them mad. So, you know, there's that balancing act, too, as to how, you know, how robust do you want the selection process to be to then be only able to select one? The good advantage of that is that people are made aware of the opportunities for public service that we might not have at our disposal today. And that would be a truly different change from the way we select board and committee members now, which is you'll just go out and find them and bring them to us. This would be more of a, almost announcing a job vacancy, and people could have interest that way. Second would be to post a letter of interest form on the website and, you know, basically just point people to a letter of interest, saying if they had interest in serving, have them kind of give us a letter of interest on the front end so that when we had openings, we would go to those that have already expressed an interest in serving in some capacity, rather than make it a quasi-job opening to just have almost an applicant pool to go to. The benefit there is you'd have a larger pool. If all of a sudden you ended up with a vacancy, we wouldn't really have to do anything other than say, hey, come on in, and let's take a look at the pool that have already submitted their letter of interest, and you could find one potentially from there. Another maybe discussion point is to continue to have the mayor and council engage community members, that maybe you find that there's some value in that, and maybe you want to continue to do it that way to some degree, and only use the others as a fallback position. You know, the good part about that, if you're a council member, is that your similar interests are likely those that will be represented by that board member, that if you, you wouldn't go find somebody to serve as your appointee in your capacity that thought totally different than you, that wouldn't seem to make good sense. And to some degree, if you go to a more anonymous process where you ask people to come to us rather than you going to them, is, you know, you could make a skill-based appointment potentially, and then find out after the fact that the person, you know, didn't think anything like you thought, and, you know, there's a risk in doing that, I would think, from your perspective. And then, you know, one of the other things that we saw up there is maybe to have some type of, early on in the year, you know, every year, have, do a call for interest, rather than having either a call at the time or a call to submit letters of interest, maybe we keep a standing list for a year so that you can seek interest at the beginning of the year and let that expire so that it doesn't sit there and become stale and old, and people wonder if they're in limbo. I mean, kind of the sense we got from this construction board of adjustment and appeals. We appointed everybody to it in two thousand, since two thousand and six, the boards never met. And, you know, you've got people that feel as though their community, they're giving back to their community and service to a board and, you know, when? So, you know, that would be a way to potentially keep it fresh. So it, you know, there's different options here. This is a good place to start the discussion. We don't have to continue to do it the way we've always done it. We could continue to do it the way we've always done it. I would still, even if we do that, I would seek your support to go ahead and get it out of the charter document where the charter speaks to how we do it and let us just control it by ordinance. But, Mr. Mayor, that's the couple of slides that I brought, hopefully not to lead us to a spot, but to get the discussion started, and maybe I'll turn it over to you to start the discussion.
All right. Start the discussion without. Imagine that I have candy in my mouth. Yeah, I think we need to discuss, and I like the idea, you know, keeping out of the charter and we control how we appoint these boards and have some flexibility, because there may be a situation where we need to, in the past, adjust it for a certain board. The reality is, and I want to get some input from council, and maybe staff, is how, I mean, what's really wrong with the way we've done it? I know, you know, gone through your information with the other cities and all, and, you know, they all sound good, but unfortunately, I know we've had it in the past where if you do kind of announce something, and like Chris said, you know, I've always found myself, maybe you guys have found different, but most of the positions are fairly coveted. There are people, good people, that are interested in helping out, and usually you're surrounded with them or you get lots of requests. If you start spreading the word out, like you said, you know, out of every hundred people, you're gonna make ninety-nine mad, because there's nothing worse than someone who's offering to donate something for free or effort, and then if you don't take them up on it. So, you know, to me, unless you feel that you've got qualified people that, you know, in contact with, you just can't find somebody, then, you know, maybe make a tweak in that particular case. But, you know, and also to the point, if it comes to sending out a mass mailing or inquiry to, for folks to come in, it's almost like having a HR director and you're, you know, hiring employees, which, you're point, which we've seen that in the past, where a certain person may be appointed to a board, but then doesn't maybe think in line with council members, and that causes friction that appointed them. And, again, not saying that every board member should think just like the council member or that we put in that position, but on the flip side, you know, with the process, you would think you would want somebody that's kind of on the same page, too. So if you open it up to, you know, the public just looking for people to send in their quote resumes, you know, you may run into that. So I kind of want to get y'all's opinion on that. If, you know, again, if the way we've been doing it, although it's not perfect, when you look at the other options, I see flaws in every one of them, so kind of have to weigh it. And, you know, my opinion is we kind of do a hybrid, keep in general the way we do it, but make some changes if we need to on certain specific types of committees, depending on what the expertise they need, or if someone from a district is having a hard time. Granted, with our districts changing, you should have a much bigger pool to pull from, too. But anyways, I'll kind of open it up to you guys, see what you think. Matt?
Yeah, that was first step. I mean, it was difficult for me to find people in my appointees, because everybody was on the edges, and, you know, everybody that I knew was right across the creek in my own subdivision, and I couldn't even use them. Now that the districts have changed, that makes it easier. You know, my initial thought as we were discussing this, and I know we talked to Bill about this a little bit, too, because he's pretty big on this. You know, we're elected representatives by the people, and we need to make sure that we are responsible, I think, for our appointees, and we owe that to those people that put us in. I want to make sure that, in some sense, we still have a, as a council member, the ability to make a decision on an appointment initially. But if it's, but I like it at-large, too, if that's possible. You know, even if we have larger districts, that's good, and that may be good enough. I still want to have the best person in there if we find that all the best engineers live in Crab Apple, because that's where all their offices are, or something like that, or Deerfield. You know, that may be a, we'd want to get those people. So, you know, maybe at-large appointments, and from a process perspective, you know, if someone, if you're not familiar with that, and if a council member chose to go with the option of doing a notice via email and looking for a position, I think that should be available to them. Because if he, he may know perfect people for four or five boards, but on that one board, he wants to find the right person, he may not know anybody, maybe willing to open that up. And, but then it'd be that council person's responsibility to do the selection, the vetting, and bring it before the council for a vote. Just my thoughts.
That's good. The only concern I would have, and we have opened them up in certain situations, but it sounds a little hypocritical, me saying it, because as the mayor, I get to choose through the whole city, but I understand the situation. But, you know, the reason it's set up in districts and people running from different districts, and initially the boards were set up in our charter, is because that way you don't all of a sudden just have one neighborhood by chance, you know, controlling everything in the city. So that would be my only concern, to open it up citywide, is over time, maybe it all trends to one area and it's not equally representative. But we should have some kind of kicker in there where if you, for example, Matt, couldn't find somebody that you felt really comfortable, you know, or we were finding that problem, maybe we could adjust that certain, certain one or whatever. That's my only thoughts on that. Bert?
Well, I agree with Matt. It is frustrating with a board or the districts and having to look over, you know, Karen got all mine across the street. But I do think, open it up, you know, into the three districts, was it with two posts? You know, that, I think that'll help that a lot. I like the way we do it now. I also kind of, you know, have a little interest in this letters cut for a year. You know, maybe you don't advertise for anything specific, but, you know, hey, if you have interest, you know, put it in there. It may, you know, and I think if we do it right from the beginning, may or may not be picked, but if you have interest, at least we got somebody to pick from. And I don't know on some of these boards, and I agree completely, that it's nice to have people with experience, but I don't know if we want a DRB that's made up of seven architects, you know, or, and nothing against that, you know, or whatever. I think you need to have some people, you know, that are out on the street, too. So I kind of like the way we, you know, do it now, is pick our own, but it would be nice to have a pool of folks that you may not know, that you could choose from, at least are some of what qualified leads. I know Karen brought up last time when we talked about this, about paying them. I mean, I don't have a problem either way, and I don't think most people that do it do it for the money, but if it entices them to make it where it has a quorum and makes it easier, it may be worth twenty-five or fifty dollars a head for our staff time, you know, we can have a meeting, this, that, and the other. And I sure think we ought to pay for any training that's mandated, as Alpharetta, I think, does.
Yeah, even the, you know, twenty, even the twenty-five, it's not enough, obviously someone's not doing it for the money, but it's a token amount that we're saying it's important, you know, and all that, but I'm talking about that today.
Couple things. Number one, I believe it really should not belong in the charter now, so I fully agree with the fact that it needs to be out of the charter. This does not, to me, a charter should, now that we're up and going, a charter only needs to cover things that a charter should cover, and this isn't one of them. I like the idea of having letters available, as long as the people submit letters knowing there may or may not even be an opening. I don't like the idea of advertising for it, because I think you're right in the fact that you have one winner and however many other losers, and I think that doesn't send a good message, because if you only have one position, then you obviously can't offer it to anyone. I think that it is good to have certain, have people that are professionally trained in certain, on certain boards, to make sure that the intent of the board is carried out. I don't, that doesn't mean everybody has to be, but you need, some people are, and I don't know how you would decide, you know, how you would do that. The DRB, you don't want a DRB that has no architects or engineers on it, because then you have people that may just care about how things look, but really don't understand why things have to look the way they do. So I don't know how to go about that. I think we need to know, I believe the way our thing is written now, if a board member is absent two times in a row without excuse or something, they're supposed to be no longer the board. We need to know, because I know we've had problems in the past, sometimes getting people to show up. So we need to be able to address it with our board member, if, you know, if taking a job out of town and not able to get there, and they may be wanting to step down, they may have felt like their service is done, and they just haven't had a chance to tell us or whatever yet. So I think we need to know that. If there is a member that isn't able to attend, you know, two or three meetings in a row, we need to discuss with them whether or not this is how they want to be involved in the city, or if there's another way they can be involved that does it. And the reason why I suggested paying a nominal amount is just so that people would look at it as a job, not as a strictly just volunteering their time, which they, you know, people look at, well, if I'm just a volunteer, I'll just come when it's convenient. But if they, if it is a job, they may be more likely to show up, just because they, it's a different mindset.
Return duty.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know if there's a way we can pay them and say the twenty-five bucks is reimbursement for expenses or whatever. Some of it could be, some of it may not be, but, you know, I just think if you paid them a little bit, then maybe they would have a different mindset about the fact that it is, it really is a, an obligation of theirs and not something they just do because they happen to have a free hour or two that night.
And, you know, I think some, maybe some solutions for Karen's concerns on, you know, example of, maybe you've got a board that needs an architect or an engineer, but there's not. You know, also staff can help with that as far as, let's just say, fortunately, you had a bunch of late persons on a certain subject, you know, staff would have to educate them on certain things, but we as council members need to take on the responsibility. If Matt feels very strongly that on the DRB, you know, he wants a citizen that has a certain perspective, you know, he wants to have there, but Karen feels real strong, you need an architect on there, then, you know, Karen should pick an architect, or we need to monitor ourselves to make sure that these boards are spread out with well-qualified people for the different boards.
And I don't know if you could even go as far as saying, okay, Board X, we've got the big DRB, because it's easy, you know, you know, the chairperson needs to be somebody that's, you know, trained in that field or something, you know, that way. I just don't want to mandate that we have to have seven of a X, you know, type of professional on it.
I've seen that, actually, where, you know, you could say, of the seven-member board, two must be qualified and hold this whatever degree. Now, I mean, we're talking about DRB, but it could be something as simple as, you know, or a different type of board structure that wouldn't necessarily be an architect or engineer. The only place that you get into trouble with that, if there's trouble to be gotten into, is if all of a sudden you have to make an appointee because you've got a vacancy and you're, well, if there's five people that don't meet the criteria, and then you're the two last council members, now your candidate pool just shrunk compared to everybody else's.
And, you know, maybe that's something among us, we need to communicate with each other to, you know, because some council members may feel stronger about a certain type person or whatever being on there, and kind of monitor ourselves to make sure that it's, you know, it's, we're not.
I felt regardless, though, some of these boards need to have professional training. And we need to, we need to pay for their training and even maybe pay for them to spend time getting trained, but they do need to understand what the rules and regulations are, especially some, a board like the BZA that is actually making decisions, it needs to understand legally what it can and can't do.
And is doing. Yeah, I mean, I mean, what?
Yeah, I mean, it needs, they, you know, when I served on the Fulton County Board of Zoning Appeals, I mean, I think I went through training three different times, because I was on the board for twelve years. So, I mean, every four years or so, we have new people on the board, and we go through, three, four, five-hour training class that was very helpful, just kind of letting us know, you know, what we could and could not do, and what we could and could not say, and how to approach things.
Oh, yeah, training absolutely is important. I can tell you that we all, the city and you all, by approval of the budget, have funded training for our boards and committees each year since the city's been here. Now, that's not to say that the committees have availed themselves to the training opportunities, but there is absolutely no problem with the funding aspect of the training.
Is that in-house training, or is it out?
Internal and external. Like Planning Commission, for example, the best training is, is, as the Vincent Institute does, kind of targeted specific Planning Commission training. So internal and external. We can either bring the training to them, or we can send them to the training.
But they could come here and do a training for the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, and maybe the first hour or two was joint, and the second hour or two was more specific to that particular board, but I don't, I would think that that might, we'd probably get them, more likely to get them to actually show up if we have it here than if we had to send them to Athens or somewhere else for it.
That's right. And they will come here and do it if we can guarantee a minimum class size. So that's kind of the trade-off, is that, you know, they'll branch out if we say that there's big enough openings.
And then that might be somewhere where we could team up with some of our sister cities and have.
And so we got to.
Get our bang for the buck. And like Karen, too, and Joe, I have no problem with pulling it from the charter, so we have a little bit more leeway, for lack of a better term, with it.
Pretty hamstrung, right now.
The only thing I would add, I hundred percent agree with the training on that, but I wish, you know, and I, in principle, we definitely want to. in principle, we definitely want to make sure we have everybody skilled in the board that we want. But I think I would agree a little bit more with Bert on this, that it's dangerous for us to, you know, to not be responding, to, how do I say this? During the election process, we have a responsibility to do what we said we would do from an electoral standpoint, to be able to, to pick people that represent us in our ideals. And that is the promise that we make to the electorate is, you know, what we believe is kind of dangerous to, to go against that in my mind. And, gee, use my words carefully here, to, to say that, you know, from an, from an election standpoint, you take away the responsibility from council in some sense to be able to put good people up there. You know, if, if a council person chooses a bad person, that person should be held responsible for it. You know, but still, that person is elected by the people at whatever point that is, and that still has more power to the electorate, to the, to the voters as regards to who is filling in those seats as much as we'd like to protect ourselves from ourselves, which I think is what Karen's trying to say. You know, there's, there's certain democratic processes that I think would be at risk if we did it that way. Just, just thinking.
Understood your point. Okay. No, that, that, yeah. I do understand that, that as an elected official, you should live or die based upon your ability to choose, live or die politically, by your ability to choose and be held accountable to who you choose to represent you when it's not you there.
Right.
And, and I agree with that, but I also want to make sure that all the people understand what their board is, they serve on, and what responsibilities of, you know, the, the Planning Commission has a responsibility to make a recommendation. The Board, the Board of Zoning Appeals, they make decisions. And, and, you know, there's a big difference in that, but people need to understand. I mean, when I was first appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, I had no idea what it even did. And it's a good thing they had training for me. But I think it's important to understand that, yes, you know, you are making a decision, that it is going to be, you know, any appeal goes to Fulton County Superior Court. So you need to make sure that not only the decisions you make are what you really want to make, but that you've worded things so that, that if, that it would be defendable in court, your decisions. And I think that's something that is very important.
You know, finishing up on the thought with, with Matt there, you know, it's, it's that aspect of living or dying politically based upon your ability to put the right person on that matches your interests, balanced against what can we do to make sure that that person that exists out there that is that person for you, you know?
I guess I'm thinking more, it, it, I'm, the term I'm using is representative form of government, you know, really, is what it is. And just because, you know, someone may or may not have the skill set, doesn't mean people select people that want to be represented in a certain way. So, but absolutely, that's why you need the training, quite honestly, to protect us against ourselves.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I think I have enough. I've taken some good notes here. Let me strip away some of the extra stuff that was in this presentation, hone it in, and then we'll bring it back in a parallel process with the charter amendments next.
Does it sound, I mean, we know we're missing some folks here, but out of the four of us in the courtroom that's here, are we all kind of on the same page that we kind of like the, the system we have, but be able to make some tweaks in it as necessary?
I've, I've taken that loud and clear. I've taken that there might be some interest at some point into specifying certain skill sets, maybe by a couple of members occasionally on, on certain boards.
And that's, you know, I know that could get really tough, but you could always have recommended, so that when, you know, you're out looking for somebody mad and it's recommended architect or engineer, you, you know, look that way.
But the thing I've heard loud and clear tonight too, which is good to hear, is training. So, let me, that was not in, that was not as a part of the discussion, didn't start as a part of the discussion, but I certainly heard it.
I think their balance is going to be, you know, who is the most skilled people within the city versus, you know, the responsibility by the council person to select someone representative of who he is.
Understand, understand. Okay. Good. I'll bring it back a little bit more refined next month.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Sudi, if you want to call the next item?
Next item, an ordinance to amend Chapter 54, Telecommunications Sections 54-3, 54-5A, 54-6F, 54-7A1, and 54-7A2, to include definition of modifications, to revise maximum telecommunication tower heights, and to provide for an expedited variance process. Mr. Ken Gerard.
I'm actually going to do this one, Sudi, and Ken's going to do the next one. Mayor and Council, this is the procedural requirement to bringing a tech, bringing a text amendment forward that needs a period of work session. This is one that we've talked about prior. I'll give you some highlights on it, what it would do, what it doesn't do, and then we'll see if you have any questions on it. This is the ordinance that will come forward next Monday night to seek to amend the telecommunications ordinance. If you remember, we had a telecommunications application come in, and it came in and it highlighted some things that were in our code that wouldn't necessarily allow us to do what seemed to be practical and reasonable when given all the facts, and that was to incentivize co-location. It's very common, I guess, as I've, as I've come to find out in the business, that you can increase coverage where gaps exist or deficiencies exist. You can seek to look to towers that already exist and say, gosh, okay, what could we do to that tower? Could we go up 20 feet? Could we go up 30 feet? You know, could we bring that one down and put better technology in its place right next to it? What exists, what could we incentivize out there that would be more attractive to us as a city than just seeing towers pop up all over the place? So we looked at our ordinance and said, you know, there's a way to potentially incentivize these co-location or drop and replace scenarios. We just need to be specific into what circumstances they would qualify. And if they qualified, would we rather have that than an application for a new steel structure in Milton? And I think across the board, the answer to that question is yes. Now, we've put some safeguards in place to make sure that a couple of the things that are offensive with towers don't come into play. One of those things is when they start to flash and, you know, they, they're pretty, well, I don't want to say they, they just disappear when they don't flash, they're, you know, big steel structures in the sky, but they're not as obvious, especially at night when they don't flash. Typically, the height requirement for when FAA requires that is 200 feet. There's some circumstances when 200 feet is, is lessened, but that's usually when you're in proximity to an airport. We don't have one of those here. So obviously FAA has to approve a tower at which they would require the tower to be lit. So we have added some language in here that says that we would authorize in this scenario up to a 30% increase so long as that FAA lighting requirement didn't trigger. Today, what exists is a maximum tower height of 150 feet. If you add 30% to that, you'll see that we get to 195 feet. That's the simple math there. But then with the, with the qualifier that says that if that 195 foot would trigger the lighting requirement, then the lesser height would be the approved height, which would not trigger the lighting requirement. Same thing for the drop and replace. Now, we have put in here that if the tower today exists as a stealth-type tower, and there's different stealth technologies, that our preference with, obviously, a little bit of discretion would be that it be replaced with a stealth technology, but not necessarily that it be replaced with the same stealth technology, because there might be new technology 15 years from when a tower would be replaced that's actually better than it was 15 years ago. If you look at the Batesville Road Site, which is the one that highlighted this, which is probably one of the first of two applications you'll see, and if you approve this ordinance, it's one of the tallest-looking light poles that you've ever seen with lights on it that don't work. But it, you know, there's probably a better stealth technology that can go in its place if that tower were to be replaced that would satisfy not only the coverage that our citizens demand, but also the aesthetic quality in Milton. There's, there's a second tower that I believe will come forward if you all approve this, and it deals with one that is in proximity to our new high school. The issue presents itself that the tower's just not simply tall enough to shoot a decent signal through the water tanks that are there. Very practical reason to say, gosh, you know, gosh, if we could put that tower up an additional 10 to 15 feet to get over the water tanks, why wouldn't we incentivize that as opposed to a new tower structure going up on the north side of Bethany Road somewhere so that it could hit into the lobby of the new high school? So, you know, this is intended to be a common sense approach and allowing our law to add a bit of common sense into it so that we can advance the position that we want in Milton, which is to have our citizens be able to have good cellular coverage because they obviously use it and to have the data in their pocket that, that they want, but also to look at ways to do that without having to put new towers in the sky. That's what this does. It doesn't remove any of the other parts of our ordinance. It doesn't all of a sudden circumvent any of the other process that we have in place if, in fact, the certain sort of criteria can't be met that would trigger this expedited process. But it, it highlights an example of how we never would have necessarily had to have been in the Stars soccer debate dilemma. We could have avoided all that if we would have had something that would have said that, this in our law at that point. So, you know, sometimes when the real world presents itself, you get the opportunity to, to respond with real, real-world solutions, and that's what this is intended to do. It's not intended to give any regulatory control away. It's just intended to make our process better. Be happy to answer any questions, and this will come forward for consideration and approval next Monday.
Do you want to have any questions?
I fully support finding ways to, to utilize existing towers rather than adding new towers, so.
I like the silo. I like the silo looking.
That's a big silo.
Big silo.
You ever see the silo at 170 feet?
Well, you know, it is nice to.
Of course, a flagpole at 170 feet might look kind of funny too.
With a little 3x5.
It's good to be able to, to have some leeway with, make some practical decisions on things that make sense. So, okay, we'll move on from that. And Sudi, if you want to call the next item?
Our last item, discussion of an ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations, to provide for enforcement of certain applicable codes relative to the safe use of real property in accordance with Georgia law, to repeal any conflicting provisions and for other purposes. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. This is coming to you as a proposed and recommended ordinance modification. I will tell you that there are some events ongoing in Milton that are driving some of this. I won't get into the specifics of this, but this was a recommendation actually from my office to ensure that the Milton Code with respect to basically property and property that may contain structures that are no longer fit for human habitation are dealt with. City of Milton, pursuant to its police power, has the ability to, to take fairly significant and substantive action with respect to properties that are no longer safe for human habitation. And in fact, the City of Milton may, may be taking such an action in the not-so-distant future. In the course and scope of reviewing our various codes, we determined that we, we really needed to tweak one of our codes, and that would be Chapter 10, with respect to Buildings and Building Regulations, to ensure that it is spot-on consistent with the Georgia statute. The Georgia statute has a pretty clearly particularized system of how cities, for instance, identify a piece of property as having a structure that is unfit for human habitation, investigate, place the property owner on notice. If there is no remedial action, bring a complaint. And quite frankly, that complaint is in the municipal court, and then, of course, can have a hearing and receive relief. And we wanted to make sure that the City of Milton's ordinance basically emulates the requisite Georgia code, candidly, almost verbatim. That's a safe place for the City of Milton to be. That's where we wanted to be. So this is what this is doing. It is simply what I would call housekeeping is what this is really doing. If you look in Exhibit A, that is the nuts and bolts of what this is doing. Section 2 is a statement of purpose and findings. The fourth paragraph down basically acknowledges that in there, in the City of Milton, there are in fact dwellings, buildings, structures, and properties which are unfit for human habitation. And then if you go down to the last part of that paragraph, it indicates that pursuant to the City of Milton exercise of its police power, we have the right to compel the repair, maintenance, closing, or demolishing of such structures. Then there's a section on definitions. Again, this is going to be out of the code. Section 4 provides that every owner of every dwelling within the City of Milton has the duty to construct and maintain dwellings in conformance with the applicable City of Milton ordinances and codes. And of course, that's what we have, responsible, professional, public officials to go out and conduct these inspections and things of that nature. Our public officers will be tasked on page 7, pursuant to OCGA 4128 and 41217, to do that litany of things you'll see in B, Sub I, Sub II, Sub III, Sub IV, Sub V, and Sub VI. Again, candidly, out of the state law. They will then apply their discretion to determine whether or not there are standard violations of our building codes that render, this is in Subparagraph C, structures unfit for human habitation. Again, the objective of the City of Milton is not to have people tear their buildings down. The, the objective is to make sure that these very minimal standards for human habitation are satisfied, and if they're not, that we can take action candidly to have people remediate. That's our goal. We want compliance. We want people to live in safe, healthy places. We're not talking about a police state. We're talking about a very low standard. But it is also the standard that even state law emulates is, this is what you need just to ensure human habitation within that, within that structure. Page 8 is the nuts and bolts. Page 8, Section 6 pertains to the enforcement procedures. If our building officials go out and say, look, we have identified what we believe is a structure that simply is not safe for human habitation. First of all, Section A pertains to an investigation. In the one situation I was talking about, there has been that investigation. Subsection B pertains to issuance of a notice and the filing of a complaint. I hope the council may recall at the last announcement section, do you remember me reading a statement to you as far as some findings of our building official? This is actually directly out of this code modification. You'll see at the bottom of, of Subparagraph B, it says, "The public officer shall notify the council of his findings." That was, that is what I was doing last week. And that was a predicate to us having to take action. There will then be the issuance of a 30-day notice. That was in Subsection C. I will tell the council that notice has been issued. And then number D, in the absence of remediation, there will be the filing of an actual complaint. Again, that is not what the City of Milton wants, but it may be where we have to be to ensure compliance.
And that's at the end of the 30 days?
That's correct. Then the subsection E pertains to the contents of the complaint. Section F pertains to the filing of the complaint. I will note for your just consideration, it's actually a complaint in the city court, the municipal court of the City of Milton, which is good news for us. I suspect that will result in a fairly quick hearing, which is what we all want. There'll be then an issuance of summons there at the bottom of page nine, followed by assuming that we prevail and I'm able to prove our case to the city court, there will be an issuance of an order, and that order will require by judicial fiat remediation of the property. And if the property is not subject to being remediated, in other words, if the property owner declares, I can't remediate it, it's, it's more value, it's going to cost more to remediate the property than the property's worth, they then have the right to demolish the property. But if they do nothing, the order of the court must stipulate that the City of Milton would then be empowered to go in and demolish the property. Again, that's not where we want to be, but it's what the law allows us and where we are allowed to be.
Is that a municipal court of Milton, because that's big? Is there an automatic constitutional right to take that down to Fulton County if you're the defendant?
No.
Can you bypass our court?
No. It's a great question the city manager's asking. The authority under this process is vested in the City of Milton court. Now, they would have a right to appeal, but the hearing is not going to be moved.
It's got to go through us.
It's got to go through us. Then we've got the issuance of the order by the court, and then we have in Section 10, non-compliance. We will be able to recover our costs of abatement. We will be able to recover those by filing various liens on the property. It is a comprehensive scheme to try and bring overt, overwhelmingly clear nuisances and structures unfit for human habitation into compliance within our law. This is a process set forth in the Georgia code, and all you are doing by adopting this is bringing our code consistent with the state law. We've gone over it with your chief building inspector. He's very comfortable with it. My office is very comfortable with it. We will be asking you to adopt it.
Karen?
Well, I assume this will also apply to houses that have been foreclosed on, so we can have a banker, whoever actually holds, even though the house is not currently being lived in, if it is the intent for it to be a livable structure, it would have to. it would have to conform to this or else we would have to, or we could go in.
It's a great question. In fact, the, the ordinance anticipates that we must let all interested stakeholders know of our activities. And of course, who might be an interested stakeholder in a property that has a mortgage on it or even something that's been foreclosed to the bank. Because it's only fair if they understand their collateral is in jeopardy, they may take the action to come in or remediate it. But yes, it would apply to everything that's potentially habitable.
And the thing we have currently is following under these modified, if we want?
We are following these rules now, but they're not in place yet. But we've still, we've been living like they are.